Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Present tonight are board members Andrew Gallimore, Scott Gingold, Beth McLennan, and I am Matt Rogers, the current chairman, and therefore we have a quorum. Also present from the city zoning department, who is also pleasant, Melissa Klotz, and we have city attorney Mario Tretto here. This is a formal meeting, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most important, only one person speaks at a time to accurately record the proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is to hear from the staff on the documents on file and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. After hearing from the applicant or appellant, any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or closing statement. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please state your name and address and be sure to sign in on the provided signup sheet. We are audio and video recorded in this space. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. When all of the testimony, evidence, and statements have been received, the board will close the record and begin its deliberations. Any matter not concluded on tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regular scheduled meeting. We have four items on the agenda this evening. I know one of them is a request for a continuance, so we do have a pretty full agenda. And the first matter that we have to take care of is the approval of our minutes from our April 1st meeting. Have members of the board had the opportunity to read the minutes? Are there any changes?
I have edit on page two, or two edits. The paragraph that begins "The ZBA then entered into deliberations with respect to the Starbucks property," where it says on the second or third line, "but is concerned about..." I don't remember my exact words, but the spirit of that ought to be changed to reflect that I was concerned about the impact on traffic of cars turning into or out of the Starbucks on both adjacent streets, not just Dodge. And then another amendment on the next line, "felt a traffic study might address this concern," not "should."
Are there any other additional changes to the minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes with the requested amendments?
I move that we approve the minutes with the requested amendments.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, and therefore all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. The minutes are approved. I see we have a member coming in, so I will note for the record that member Violetta Cullen is joining the board. And we will begin our agenda with the first matter this evening, which is 1901 Dempster. Is the applicant here? 1901 Dempster. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the old... I'm a little bit...I'm a bit behind here a bit. So I'm looking for 1580 Dewey. All right. 1718 Cleveland Street, I know is a request for continuance. 2533 Lawndale, the applicant is here. And 1523 Payne is also here. So with that, we will begin. If I could have Melissa please read into the record our first case.
Donna Lee Floater, architect, applies for major zoning relief to construct a two-story addition at a legally non-conforming two-flat. The applicant requests to construct a 28-square-foot addition with a south interior side yard setback of three feet, where a minimum five feet is required. Zoning code section 6847A3. The request is an expansion of floor area to a legal non-conforming use due to the lot size per dwelling unit. The existing two-flat is located on a total lot size of 4,760 square feet, where 3,500 square feet per dwelling unit is required. Zoning code section 6844. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record are variance application submitted March 17, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plative survey dated November 19, 2013, site plans, elevations, letter of approval from 1578 Dewey Avenue, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and spark draft meeting minutes of April 9, 2014.
Thank you. If I could ask at this time, anybody who wishes to speak with us on this particular matter be sworn by raising their right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I give it to you.
Thank you. If the applicant could please come up and tell us about their project, beginning with stating your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Donna Lee Floater. I'm the architect for the project. My address is 826 Gray in Evanston. I was hired by the property owner Veronica Metz, 1580 Dewey, who is present this evening as well. As Melissa stated, the property is 4,760 square feet. It has a two-flat on it that was built in 1925, so this two-flat is original to the property, was always a two-flat. The major portion of the building is brick. At the rear, there is a frame enclosed portion, and that's where we're planning to do this addition. I maybe should have asked Melissa this earlier, but in my calculations, the addition on the ground is 10 and 1/2 square feet, so I'm not sure where you got 28. But we are within our lot coverage limits and impermeable surfaces coverages anyway, so that's not...we have a zoning approval for that portion that we're not subject to question on those limits. The rear frame portion, approximately 8 by 24 existing, is a two-story portion, and then there's an angled or bay-shaped portion that's a first-floor portion only. The foundation under the two-story portion is in need of repair. The foundation under the bay-shaped portion is almost nonexistent, so that's one of the reasons to have this request. It needs to be rebuilt as a course of maintaining this building. So the angled...what we're asking to add is to straighten out one of the angled portions of the bay shape on the back, the south side of the property, and that's where the 10 and 1/2 square feet is being added. And it is being added on both floors, so maybe that's where Melissa got the 28, but it's...I just went through the calculations again this afternoon, and the little bit of a triangle-shaped addition is 10 and 1/2 square feet. The existing south setback of the building is a little shy of three feet, and at the frame portion, it is three feet, so we would just be extending that three-foot line of the south end of the building, south side of the building, to the west to angle or to straighten out that angle. I think that covers the thing. I went through the standards and just had a few notes about the standards. I know you do that as well. But just to get this in the record, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on use enjoyment or property values. The proposed addition is extending the existing line of the building, not encroaching any farther south than it already does. And we do have a note of support from the south neighbor who's the most directly affected. The requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The ordinance does allow improvement of existing buildings. This is definitely in need of improvement. The little bit of an addition is in order to make the rear portion of that room more usable. Hardship is peculiar to the property. The lot size is small for the district. It was originally plotted that way, as far as we know. The building was originally built as a two-flat in 1925, has always been used as a two-flat. The zoning for that building is R3, which allows two-flats. And again, we are not asking for any kind of variance on lot coverage or impermeable surfaces coverage. Under the standard 4, owner will suffer a particular hardship. The lot size is small, so it's below the limit, even though it's always been a two-flat. No matter what we would ask for in terms of adding square footage to this property would require a variance, so this is the minimum amount that we could ask for. And any...even though we're within our limits, any request we would have, no matter where it is on the lot, would be brought before this board. The request is not based on a desire to extract additional income. Yes, we know that improving a property does increase its value. I don't know that 10 and 1/2 square feet makes a big impact on the property value. The owner just bought the property in the fall, is remodeling it for her own use, will live on one floor. Doing this work will encourage an owner-occupant, which is always helpful to a rental property. And then the angle...taking away that angled portion makes that bedroom more usable for arranging furniture. It's pretty small as it is right now. The hardship is definitely not created by the current owner because this lot was divided and the property built in 1925. And as I said earlier, the requested variation is the least amount we could ask for because nothing is the least we could ask for, because if we asked for anything, we need to come before this board. So if we have any questions?
Just so I understand, to simplify the project, is essentially all you're doing is squaring off where the bay window is in the back?
Correct.
And you're not extending that footprint out further toward the rear of the property?
Correct. It'll come out to just square off where that angled portion is.
And on the side of the house, it's going...it's just gonna join with the existing...
It already...yeah, it already does. That line is just gonna be continued farther west to straighten out that angle.
Right. So the addition will be the same distance from the side of the property as the existing house?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, if we got picky, it's actually a little better because the building is not quite parallel, so it improves as it goes farther back.
Got it.
So...but we're talking, you know, like an inch.
And so you're squaring the southwest corner of the bay?
Correct.
You're not doing anything to the northwest corner?
Correct.
And that only...that's only a one? That's only the first floor? That's not...that doesn't run up to the second floor?
Currently, that bay does not go to the second floor, but our proposal...we are planning to add the second story.
Okay.
And again, that doesn't affect lot coverage or impermeable surfaces. It does affect the side yard setback for the second story as well as the first, but it's the same three feet.
Right. I just...yeah, I didn't see it on the plans yet. Oh, here it is.
Yeah. And then the north side setback, we're already more than the five feet minimum, and we're not building anywhere close to that side anyway, so...
Right. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
You'd mentioned that the state of the foundation, current foundation, is almost non-existent in some places.
Under the bay portion, yeah, especially.
So I'm assuming that you will be building a new foundation in order to shore up this construction since you will be building higher, et cetera?
Everything will comply with current building code.
And is your intention to remove what is there or just correct the errors in what is there? Or do you know yet?
Without starting to get into it, I mean, it's not our intent to completely remove it, but we can do a lot with underpinning what's there and...
And the only reason I ask is because that way we are sort of guaranteed that where you're building is...
Yes.
If you all of a sudden remove everything and start from scratch, that's where things get a little gray sometimes. And so the current structure on the first floor, it looks like what is labeled as a master bedroom, I don't know if that's currently a master bedroom, is roughly a 14 and 1/2 foot square, and then that...those corners are cut out of it. And so where you're adding in that corner would make it a little more square.
Right. And the existing...the owners applied for a permit for interior remodeling, which has already been granted and work is being done, so some interior remodeling of those spaces is already in progress.
And the owner intends to make the first floor their residence?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Are there any other questions from members of the board from Ms. Floater? If not, I know a couple other people had raised their hand to speak on the issue, so I will ask you if you'd like to step up to the microphone, please? And if you could tell us your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Eva Holland Swichet, and I'm here on behalf of my mom that's over here, Irene Greer, the owner of 1584 Dewey.
All right. And could you please tell us what brings you tonight?
Well, what brings me tonight is once I received the zoning board appeals from my mom. I was ill, but I had to get out the hospital to just come and take care of this for her. But on the other hand, is that when I read it, first of all, in the beginning, it was kind of confusing, because number one, I'm not an architect, but you know, I can check out things on my own. And from receiving this and from what the lady just described and said she don't know what would be corrected or not, is that I brought some pictures to show...I don't know if any one of you guys have visited the site or anything, but the first picture is the existing property. Whom should I give this to?
If you can bring them to me, and I will need to keep these to enter them in the record, if that's okay.
Oh, okay. This is the first...
And I'm going to ask you to speak into this, just so we can...
The first one that I'm giving you is the existing property the way it is. And this is the...
And I'm going to mark this Exhibit A.
Right. Can I say hello? On the north side of this building, that is the sidewalk for the existing property that they're in...that is in question about as far as the zoning and the square foot that needs to be allowed. And then this is second. I had some of the community activists that works on lands and stuff came, and that's where they had started working. That is not the southwest side of the building. This is the same side that I just showed you, which is incorrect. That's the north side of the building.
Okay.
And...
I'm going to mark this one as Exhibit B.
And this is number three. This is the back piece of the building for the garage, towards the garage.
So this is the space between the building and the garage?
Right.
Okay. So I'll mark this Exhibit C.
And this is the south end of the building, which is from the front door on the Dewey side. That's the south end of that building. So it appears that the letter needs to be corrective, based on the work that they want to do.
So the brick building here, I can see the address of 1580, and is the yellow brick is the one to the south of it?
Right.
Which would be 1578, if I'm reading my map correctly. So I'm gonna mark this picture Exhibit D.
Yes.
Okay. Just a couple quick questions. Did you take these pictures?
I know. We have someone to take it for us.
Okay. And when were the pictures taken?
The picture was taken last Thursday once. My sibling, Glenn's for Gentle, went over after I called him after my mom brought the paper to the husband and showed it to me. He went over there and asked them who gave them the permission to dig up the dirt and put it on our front lot. And then the man says, "Well, the owner is not here, and the construction supervisor is not available, but we'll call him and we'll see." So the next day, they had removed the dirt.
Okay.
But the work will still be going on.
And so at the time, though, that these pictures were taken last Thursday, this is an accurate representation of what was going on on the property at that time?
Yes.
All right.
So I gotta go back to my notes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I will give the applicant an opportunity to look at the pictures also.
Sure. So as I said, I think there should be a corrective notice because this is not what I understand from what she was presenting, unless, you know, I'm not aware of some of the techniques or lingo of, you know, some of the wording that needs to be done as far as architect use. But as I read it, I think it should be a corrective notice because I feel that if they need 7,000 square feet, and then the letter is saying one thing, I don't think there should be any type of encouchment. I think she mentioned that. That was my mom concerned on the property. So we wanted to know, did we need a variance that...because we're not allowing anything to be given away or to be shared. So my question is to you or whomever would like to answer this, is that if it's no easement from the improvement and the city cannot approve or allow, you know, newcomer to the block, it's good that we're having a new neighbor, but I think that the neighbor should have been more ethical and came and talked to us before they actually did what they did. So therefore, at this point, I'm just requesting the two things, or to ask whether or not we need a corrective notice or a different description of this that was sent out.
I apologize, ma'am. I'm not exactly following.
I think I'm tracking. And so what I'm going to do is when I share the photos with the architect, I think she can answer some of the questions. I think what is happening is work is being done on the project right now.
The open lot, right.
But it is not the work that is being brought before this board.
Exactly.
Because it doesn't necessarily have to come before this board if they have the proper permits, if any are needed, for work to be done. People can do work on their property without having zoning changes, and all they need to do is have the correct permits from the building department.
Well, before this new people or persons that just recently purchased the building, last year in 2013 and the latter part of 2012, some architects that came in, but they did all work on the inside, so we didn't have to be bothered.
Well, and again...
But they did have their permits.
As long as the permits are issued, we as a board are only to address the issue of the requested zoning relief. And so what is happening there now, and I'm going to get the architect to talk with me a little bit about that, I believe is not within the purview of this board, but is something that as long as the proper permits have been applied for through the city, it's allowed to happen.
It's allowed to happen so long as they're using the premises of their own, not on somebody else's property.
Whose property are they on?
On our lot, 1584 Dewey. I just showed you in the second piece that we took, where you saw the debris.
Can I ask a question? Do you live where that fence is?
Yes.
Oh, you live in that back house where that fence is?
Right. And the front property is also a part of that house, yes.
And it's just like an open lot?
Yes.
Yeah, I lived close by, and I always thought it was an empty lot because it's open.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
It's open only because the city didn't want to allow us to build five years ago.
Okay. I just was asking for clarity.
Oh, sure. No problem. Any other questions?
No, I think...thank you. Between you and Mr. Rogers, you cleared it up for me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak to us over there? I know the three of you had raised your hands, but I think you're all together. Okay. At this time, if Ms. Floater...Floater, I always want to put an extra ER in your name, could come back up, I would like to ask a couple questions about the...
Of course.
...the photos that have been shared. The first image that was shared with us, I'm gonna ask you to please come up here so that we can look at the photos together, so I can make sure I'm talking about the correct one.
Okay.
So the first image that was shared with us, which shows what I believe is the north side of the property. Am I correct? So the work that is being done there, is this permitted work?
That is currently under permit and involves some underground digging to do an electrical cable.
Okay. And is the dirt that has been removed and the debris that has been removed, is it currently still there?
I don't know.
To your knowledge, if I could...
The homeowner would need to answer that. I haven't been to the site recently.
If I could ask the homeowner then to please step up?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Veronica Metz. I'm the owner of 1580 Dewey. Our builder thought that it was an empty lot there and put all the dirt on our sidewalk, and it spilled onto your lot. I'm so sorry about that. We spoke with your brother, Mr. John Greer, and he said he was uncomfortable with being on his lot, and we moved it all, so I'm really sorry about that. It's kind of an oversight, but...
So the current status of the property is that any debris is currently on your property and not on the property of 1584?
Correct. We moved all the dirt.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So it appears that the work that is being done...
Thank you. Sure.
It appears that the work that is being done, according to the architect, is under permit, and that the debris has been moved back off of the property at 1584, so I think we're all in a good space with that. Was there anything...yes? If you could come up to a microphone, please, I'm sorry.
I would just ask you, is it pending or is the permit actually there for the digging?
The permit has been granted.
Has been granted?
Yes.
Okay. And then you said you are the owner, and you're the one that came over to the house yesterday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And if you have questions about whether things are permitted or not, permits should be displayed on the subject property, telling you what they are authorized to be working on and doing. With that, I will ask if the applicant has anything they would like to say in summation?
I don't think so.
Okay. So with that, we will go ahead and close our record and begin our deliberations. The board, in order to approve any project, must find that several standards for a major variation have been met, and we will walk through those standards at this point. The first standard is that the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. I believe that for such a minimal improvement that is being requested, and the fact that it actually makes the space somewhat more habitable, and also is bringing a building which sounds like it needs a little bit of repair work up to standard, and having addressed the issue about having any sort of debris flowing over property lines, I feel that this standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. We know that the zoning ordinance specifically wants us to try to improve stock that is existing and maintain it as best we can. The fact that quite often properties like this can be slated for either a demolition or having them radically altered, the fact that someone is coming before us with a proposal that requests such a small variation is refreshing to see, and I believe is in keeping with the zoning ordinance, so that standard is met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. We have heard testimony that this property is much smaller than a lot of the other properties in the area. The building was constructed some 90 years ago and really sort of predates before we actually started assigning that there must be so much square footage for a property to exist, so I believe that this standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. The fact that this property, again, is a small... The fact that this property, again, is a small property and has an odd shaped back room that was, that was an addition to the property, not originally part of the building, I believe, makes us a, a, a good place to, to square that off and to make that more usable space. We don't see it encroaching on, on any other properties. So I believe that this standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is based, not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income, whereas we will see hopefully a property value increase by an improved property. The fact that this improvement, we don't expect to drastically alter the income that will be generated by this property. I will note that this is a two flat with the current owner will be living on the first floor, so it will be a rental property. So there will be income, but not excessive income due to this improvement. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. We've heard testimony that the property was purchased sometime last fall and therefore it had been in this condition for some time and therefore that standard has been met. And number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board. I think this is probably one of the smallest improvements we have seen, but hopefully it will make a, a big impact in the living space that's included within this property. So I believe that this standard has been met. Does the rest of the board agree with my findings on the standards?
Yes.
Yes.
With that, I will ask, is there a motion?
Okay. I'll break the silence. I move that in the matter ZBA 14ZMJV-0022 regarding the property at 1580 Dewey Avenue, that we approve the variation requested on the condition that the property be developed in accordance with the documents submitted and the testimony given tonight.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing five ayes and zero nays, the motion is passed and the project is approved. Good luck with your project.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. And I'd like to say thank you to the neighbors for coming out as well. With that, we will move to our second case of this evening, which is 1718 Cleveland Street. We have a note before us that this case is a requested continuance until our meeting on May 20th. So I will ask if someone on the board would please make a motion to that effect.
Oh, let me see the page. Sure, hang on. Scrolling, scrolling. Thank you. I move that in the case of ZBA 14ZMJV-0026, 1718 Cleveland Street, that the applicant be granted a continuance until, sorry, was that the next?
May 20th.
Until, until May 20th.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of continuing case 14ZMJV-0026 to our meeting on May 20th, 2014 in this room, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Everyone voting in favor, that matter will be continued to our May 20th meeting. The next case on this evening's agenda is 2533 Lawndale Avenue, and I will ask that it be read into the record, please.
Matthew Clark, property owner, applies for major zoning relief to demolish an existing detached garage and construct a new two-car detached garage. The applicant proposes 65% impervious surface coverage where a maximum 45% is allowed, zoning code section 68210A. The existing impervious surface coverage on the property is 63%. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record are variance application submitted March 8th, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated April 24th, 2013, site plan, elevations, letters of approval from six adjacent properties, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and spark draft meeting minutes of April 9th, 2014.
Thank you. If I could have everyone who wishes to speak to us on the matter for 2533 Lawndale, please be sworn by raising your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. If you could please come up to the lectern and give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Matthew Clark. My address is 2533 Lawndale. Our current garage is in a pretty sad state of affairs. The concrete foundation on it is cracked. It takes on water in the winter. In fact, we had a sheet of ice a couple of different times where the, or wheels were locked in. I couldn't actually get my wife's car out one morning. We wanted to tear it down, build a new garage. If you, I think there are pictures attached there. The side walls are sort of buckling. There is actually, you can see daylight through the bottom of the foundation on certain edges. The, the walls sit directly on ground and the ground is, when it rains, it's starting to erode a little bit into the alley and so the back wall especially is buckling. And the front eve on the front over the garage door is sort of, not falling, but it's sort of pitched down a little bit. Currently, we have a driveway that runs down the side of ours, which is why we're at a impervious surface ratio of 63%. We'd like to build the garage a little bit wider to accommodate two cars and to be able to get in and out at the same time. We have a nine-month-old and the car seat right now, we can't get it out of the car when we have two, two cars in there. Part of the reason for the increased square footage on that is also because we have to add a setback to the alley to meet code. I think a new, a new garage will look very nice. As like I said, this current one is in, it's a pretty sad state of affairs, I think.
All right, thank you. So the current measurements of the garage, the frame garage that stands there now, is roughly a 19 by 21, I'm rounding up. And you're looking to go to a 20 by 22?
Correct.
And the condition of the current garage, I'm assuming you'll, you'll be pouring a new foundation for it, a new slab for it, as well as doing the rest of the construction on it. I've noted that your driveway and the neighbor's driveway are sort of contiguous with each other.
Yeah.
And run the length together of the property and that you have a small apron which extends to the north so that you can get two cars in instead of just coming straight back and not being able to use the second half of your garage. Does anyone have specific questions for Mr. Clark?
Yes, you said, I was trying to look at this on Google just now and I couldn't quite see it. You mentioned that a lot of the problem with the impervious surface is because your driveway is asphalt going back. Have you guys considered tearing that out and putting pervious pavers in?
What's, I don't know what pervious pavers are.
They're kind of a paving brick that would, correct me if I'm wrong on the figures, but you would get quite a reduction in your impervious surface coverage if you use them instead of asphalt. I think it's 20%, Melissa?
It would receive a 20% discount by the zoning code, but I think what's important to note in this case is that the driveway is immediately adjacent to the neighboring driveway. And neither driveway is wide enough to function on its own, so to change material when the two abut could be problematic.
That's what, that's why I was trying to get a, a good read on it with an aerial and.
Yeah, our neighbors were actually, when we, they were, the ones we share with are fully onboard. They, they use our driveway actually to get into there because they stack their parking. They use our driveway to get in. And so for us to do anything with that driveway would directly impact how they.
Right. All right. Yeah, that, okay, so that's just general to the rest of the board. That's my biggest problem with this is that neighborhood is a, a floody neighborhood anyway. So I'm not opposed to going, I'm not opposed to going 2% over what's already there, but both of those driveways ought to be pervious pavers, in my opinion.
On the, on the plat of survey that we have, it's page 64, if you can find that, Melissa. There is, with, it's the one with the drawing of the new garage footprint placed in. There's notes about remove existing concrete walk, add new service walk, remove and replace front sidewalk. Is any of that sort of stuff happening?
Yeah, we, the front walkway is cracked and it doesn't, it, there's a big gap on the front steps between where it, the concrete, it's, it's fallen away from the front steps. So there's a gap about this big on that front there.
So that, that's directly in front of the concrete stoop that's drawn.
Correct. It's that concrete walk that runs from the, the Lawndale up to the front of the house. And we're just keeping it, we're just going to keep it the same. We thought about changing it, but it, all the rest of the ones on our, on the street, they're all concrete, all the way down the block on both sides.
And then I'm noticing that on the back of the property, there are concrete walks on both your property and the neighbor's property that sort of runs between the garages?
Yes, that's the, that's the access into the alley at this point. That's.
And is that, are there any plans to change that in any way?
Uh, no, it's a shared, there's a shared gate there to go out to the, to the alley. So there wasn't any plan to do anything with that.
So there's no place that we're changing, even if it's replacing as is hard surface?
No, the only, there's a, a little bit on the setback there and then a little bit to the, what is that, to the north there to slightly, you know, widen the garage.
Because one of the things that I'm just concerned about is, is the fact that you had mentioned sheets of ice forming and anywhere that we can take the opportunity to correctly grade concrete surfaces, hard surfaces, is definitely an opportunity we like to take. But it doesn't sound like you're really changing anything there.
No.
Is there anyone else here this evening who wish to speak to us on this matter? Seeing no one, is there anything you'd like to say in summation, Mr. Clark?
Well, one other thing, the, the actual, the, the 2% actually calculates out to 60 square feet, which, when I, I just, I just wanted to note that actual number there.
All right. Thank you. With that, we will go ahead and begin our deliberations and close the record. I will ask general feelings from the board.
I, I recognize the perviousness issue is the one we're citing and agree with Beth's concern. However, this is a small lot and a garage on the lot that is not by today's standards a standard size. And since the existing impervious space is 63%, is that right? It's going from 63 to 65? That change in order to obtain a garage that is a standard size by today's standards seems like the minimum change necessary to me, notwithstanding the addition for this peculiar property of small size of 2% more of impervious surface coverage.
I will note, just Melissa and I were talking about, you know, sort of the other surfaces and everything and we even looked at, you know, if, if we were to request the, the concrete walk up front to be changed to a, a more pervious surface like a brick or something like that. We still are increasing what is currently there, so we really don't gain anything on that, which I know is something that somebody probably would mention and.
I, I consider the gain to be fairly modest considering that it brings the garage to a size that's fairly standard by the size of today's cars compared to when the garage was probably built.
No, I already put my two cents in. I mean, it's a, it's a systemic problem over there. They, we should just, the city should require pervious pavers on any kind of construction, but we don't do that yet, so.
All right. Again, as we have done with the previous project, we have seven standards that we must determine have been met in order for us to grant any sort of a, a variance request. So we will go through those seven standards. Number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. We have statements from several of the neighbors. I think about all of the surrounding neighbors who have stated that they are in favor of the project. We know that those property owners are usually looking out for their best interests. So if they believe that, that nothing should have a, an adverse impact, then I believe the board should, should be in agreement. So that standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. One of the things the zoning ordinance does try to do is to move cars off the street and into private parking spaces, be that a garage or some sort of a parking structure at the back of the building. And so I think by making this a more usable space, it encourages that, that to happen and therefore I believe that this is in keeping with the zoning ordinance. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. Again, we find ourselves with a substandard lot in terms of the size and the fact that it already is, is non-conforming when it comes to impervious surface coverage. And the requested change, while it is increasing the impervious surface, is, is not going to, to make a drastic impact. I just noticed a statement here, which I'm going to just read, although you cannot respond since we've closed the record. But I do notice that rain barrels have been something that has been discussed in here as well. So I think maybe as one of our conditions, when we get to that, we can definitely recommend rain barrels to help keep water from going onto these hard surfaces. So that standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were carried out. This is a, a garage which was built long before the size of cars got much larger. I think the requested change is, is definitely what, what is needed for two cars to fit comfortably in a garage. So I believe this standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income. I would say that most people who have a home would expect to have a, a well-constructed and functioning garage. Most of them, I would expect, are looking for a two-car garage if possible. So I think that this is, is quite typical and is not something that is going to generate additional income for the property. So that is met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. The fact that this garage is, is in somewhat disrepair leads me to believe that has been here for several, several years before the current property owner has had it. And therefore they are just trying to remedy a situation that exists. So standard number six has been met. And standard number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the ZBA. As I mentioned before, this is not a, an excessively large garage. It is what we typically see for people coming to us and asking for a two-car garage. And is, because of where it needs to be located, I think that this definitely is the minimum needed and therefore does meet that standard. needed, and therefore, does meet that standard. Does everyone agree with my findings on standards?
Yes.
I do.
With that, I will ask if there is a motion.
I move that in 2533 Lawndale Avenue, ZBA case 14ZMJV-0023, that we grant major zoning relief for the applicant to demolish an existing detached garage and construct a new two-car detached garage with increasing the impervious surface coverage to 65%, where a maximum 45% is allowed, with the following conditions that the project is carried out in substantial compliance with the testimony and documents presented here tonight, and with additional condition that downspouts and draining on the new garage be directed into either rain barrels or away from the pervious surface to prevent flooding and excessive water coverage on the, on the pervious surface. Does that make sense? Sure, why not?
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that five ayes and zero nays, the project for 2533 Lawndale is approved. Good luck with your project. We have one more case this evening, which is the case at 1523 Payne Street. If we could please have that read into the record.
John Elmer Jr., property owner, applies for major zoning relief to construct a second-story addition to an existing one-story office and warehouse building, American Vintage Homes Incorporated. The applicant requests a .1-foot street side yard setback where 10 feet is required, zoning code section 61346B, and a 1.6-foot rear yard setback where 5 feet is required, zoning code section 61346E. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application submitted March 19th, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey, site plans, elevations, images of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and spark draft meeting minutes of April 9th, 2014.
The applicant is here, and if I could ask at this time, anybody who may wish to speak to us on the matter for 1523 Payne Street to be sworn by raising your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. If you would please come up and give us your name and address.
My name is Eric Gresla. I'm the architect, working with the applicant in American Vintage Home.
Could you spell your last name, please?
G-R-E-S-L-A.
Thank you.
I apologize. I have a PDF here of some documents. If we could pop this in.
I think she has to go over.
There.
square feet, and the proposal is to do a partial second-floor addition at the rear third of the building of about 3,000 square feet. The applicant had preferred to try and acquire additional property adjacent, had some lengthy discussions with the property owner, and has not been able to come to any sort of agreement. The, this is, this structure is on the west half of the building, right along Ashland Avenue. The east half of the lot is parking, which is maxed out for current use, current space. The addition, I should say, is not quite maxed out. We are adding two additional parking spaces, so we meet the requirement for parking. The additional space on the second floor is primarily warehouse space, some additional This is the view from Payne looking north down Ashland. And here, this is the area where the addition is proposed. Essentially, we're asking to extend the existing setbacks straight up from a current approximately 15 feet up to 29 feet. Here's a view showing the adjacent house to the north, and then the inset on the left is a closer view of the house. This is the proposed first-floor plan. So, you see the column line bubbles above. That represents the extent of the addition. Part of the challenge of this project is the existing operations to remain in use and in operation throughout construction. So, we looked at some ways of, you know, essentially, the existing structure cannot support the second floor. It has roof trusses that extend the full width of the building, and what we are doing is gonna float a new second-floor structure above those trusses, and we have to drop in columns down the, the length of our addition. To place, to meet the zoning setbacks would be 5 feet off the north wall, the alley, and 10 feet off the Ashland wall, and that would put columns right in the middle of existing warehouse space, would be very disruptive. And we're, we're trying to keep the existing roof in place while we build this. The new floor will float directly above that, so we're minimizing the height for the addition. This is the proposed second floor, and you can see it requires two means Vgress plus an elevator for full accessible access to the second floor, and those take up quite a bit of floor space. Here's the proposed sections. You can see at the first floor, the existing roof truss system with the proposed, we're basically repeating that same type of structure for the second floor. Again, the overall height is 29 feet above grade. Now, this is the proposed site plans. You can see the full extent of parking on the east half of the lot. The denser shaded area at the upper half of the building is the proposed addition, and I've plotted the shadow line at a 45-degree sun angle from the southwest, I'm sorry, southeast. So, the lighter shadow is the actual shadow that would be projected at that angle for our proposed addition. The area circled in red shows an as-of-right addition with the current, with the required setbacks, but going up to the allowed 41 feet. So, it actually, you know, has a greater impact on the adjoining property to the north.
Just a quick question, if you could go back to that one. So, the, the kind of hatched box at the top there, just off the shadow line, that is the house that you showed us in one of the earlier...
Correct, correct. That's the, the property to the north has a single-family home on the front half of the property, and a two-story, I believe, a live-work masonry building on the back half.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. Is that, that's a residential house. I went over there, but it had a business sign out front. Is it a business, or is it a house?
I don't know the current use of it.
It's actually a live-work space, so you, you can live in it and have a functional business there. It's typical of the MXC district in which this is located.
And people are living there?
Correct.
Oh, okay. I just wonder, wanna know about that.
So, in terms of character of the neighborhood, it was pointed out to us that this zone or this district has many non-conforming properties. Adjacent buildings are typically, adjacent commercial buildings are typically zero lot line on street frontages, so this is of similar character. So, here's a series of three-dimensional images showing an as-of-right addition, just building out the volume per the setbacks up to the 41 feet, and from the same viewpoint, proposed addition. Coming around to the north, northwest, looking at the property, again, as-of-right, volume 5 foot off the alley, 10 feet off Ashland, and the proposed. So, quite a bit lower, less volume impact. And then a bird's-eye view of those, of the complying setback versus the proposed. The American Vintage purchased this property in 2005 and made substantial improvements. It was a mishmash of masonry, concrete block, glass block. They invested quite a bit into the property to address the, the building envelope performance and apply the stucco coating to unify the appearance. The intent, we're still studying the elevation, but the intent is to very much continue the language and, you know, the two tones of stucco with articulation on these large walls. And I believe that's it. If I can address questions, or...
Other questions from members of the board?
At this location, American Vintage is pretty much office, not so much.
Currently, about half the space is warehouse inventory and half office space. The need for the addition is primarily warehouse. They cannot stock enough inventory for their technicians.
So, that second floor is gonna be warehouse space?
Primarily warehouse. There'll be a few additional offices, but we're not increasing employees at the, at the facility, at the site.
Just curious, how many employees do you have? Approximately?
Well, there are, there are 22 technicians that are out in the field every day with the trucks onsite. Like, dig through, there's, we...
You don't have to do that.
We had 14, 14 office and two in the warehouse.
Oh, okay.
So, 15, 16 employees.
And I understood you to say that you are increasing parking spaces by two?
Correct.
And that will bring you into compliance?
The, I believe the zoning applicable to this addition is no, you know, no, we don't need to increase spaces, but we are able to increase two because we're getting rid of a shed and extending some area that isn't currently designated as parking. But we do, we do comply with the zoning requirements for parking.
To clarify, the existing parking on-site currently is 10 spaces, which is legally non-conforming. So, with the two additional spaces, you'll be at 12, but the actual parking requirement does not increase based on the plans that were provided because the parking is mostly based on number of employees, which is not changing.
Okay, thank you. And I will note also for the record that this particular parcel of land was rezoned in 2013, which happened after the current owner had purchased it. It was originally a C2 district and is now a mixed-use district, which, as we discussed earlier, includes a lot of these kind of work-live-type facilities, and is usually a lot of legal non-conforming uses throughout.
There are, maybe somebody else? I, I drove by there. There's other buildings in that zoning district that are up to lot line, aren't there? Or are there?
Yes.
Quite, quite a few.
Quite a few, quite a few.
I mean, like I said, this was originally zoned as a commercial district.
Right.
And in commercial districts, quite often, we find very little setbacks for space in between buildings, so...
Okay, I don't have any questions.
Any other questions from the board? Was there anybody else here who wished to speak to us this evening on this matter? Seeing none. Was there anything you'd like to say, Mr. Gressa, or Gressla, in conclusion?
No, I, I think we've met the standards, as described in the application. In terms of economic impact, not increasing employees, it's just to reduce the number of deliveries to the, or the frequency of deliveries to the site to supply adequate inventory.
How much increased traffic for deliveries are you anticipating? I mean, are we anticipating three trucks a week?
Well, I think, I think the, the big thing will be that we're gonna have much less. The problem is we'd be running out of inventory. Our technicians use material. Immediately the next day, we need another truck, and our traffic is just crazy because we got all these deliveries, and I'm trying to get my technicians out, and it's just, it's just crazy. So, what the big thing is right now is we're, we have a shed that we're gonna be taking down because that doesn't, it's not a secure layout. So, we can't put all of our inventory in there. And so, the big thing is, as, as Eric pointed out, we tried to purchase the parcel of land right next to us, and with the existing owner, we had, two times, we came to an agreement on the price, and each time, he said, "Well, I, I'm, I'm not gonna go ahead with this." So, it was a very frustrating thing. So, we just have to do something because we really would like to stay in Evanston. We've been here for quite a while, and so, this is a kind of a plan that we kind of hoped would be able to work, and I think that would take care of us for what we need.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I, if I could get your name for the record, just real quick.
My name's, my name's John Elmer.
John Elmer?
Yes.
And you are the owner?
I am part-owner with my partner.
Okay, thank you.
Mark. Thank you.
With that being said, we can go ahead and close our record, not seeing anybody else who wished to speak to us, and begin our deliberation on this matter. So, I will ask for general thoughts from the board.
On projects like these, I'm usually moved by whether the requested relief somehow changes the footprint or further encroaches on a property line than already is being done. And in this case, it's just an, an extension of the facade up, which, for me, suggests it's not really requesting much of a variation. So, I, I'm inclined to grant, grant the relief requested in cases like that.
I think it's a reasonable request.
All right. Again, one of the things we must do is go through the standards to make sure the standards are met, so I will be doing that again. The first standard, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. As we discussed, this is a mixed-use district and is surrounded by many mixed-use districts. We find a lot of buildings that are legally non-conforming in these districts, and we have not heard testimony from anyone that would lead us to believe that they would be, be adversely impacted by the structure that's been proposed before us, so that standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. One of the things the zoning ordinance does look into is how do we keep businesses in Evanston and allow them to expand? It sounds like this particular property owner has tried to expand out without much success and are left with being able to expand up. And we have seen through the various renderings that have been presented to us that that really is the only place that they have an opportunity to go, and so, I believe that the, the zoning ordinance is being met here with the proposed project. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. Again, with this particular property, we're often, we're already finding what is essentially a zero lot line, and so, to ask them to, to try to do something different here means it's actually putting somewhat of a more burden on them to try to figure out how to suspend something without the support of the actual walls that already stand there. So, that, that standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as... as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. Kind of continuing with what I was just saying, quite often on these properties where we find people who want to add a second story, be it in a residential or a commercial district, we try to, whenever possible, allow them to build on the first-floor walls as opposed to trying to cantilever or bring something in in such a way that it makes it sometime more cumbersome for them to try to achieve their plans. So I believe number four has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. We don't see that this is going to necessarily bring additional income for the property itself. We're hoping that the business is successful with their expansion and that they do generate additional income for themselves that way, but this standard has been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. As discussed before, they have tried to remedy this by expanding out without much luck. The building has existed in its current condition for some time, and actually it was improved upon by the current owners when they purchased the property back in 2005. And I would notice that the city actually has changed the zoning on them, so if anything, the city has probably created some of the difficulty. So this standard has been met. And number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the ZBA. We have seen what is allowed to be built on this property, and I think it is very telling that the property owners are not necessarily wanting to max out their property. They're looking to expand for what they need to meet their current goals, and I believe that allowing their requested variation allows them to do that in a feasible way and is the least required deviation, so that standard has been met. Does everyone agree with my findings on the standing, standard, my findings on the standards?
I do.
I agree.
Yes. Thank you. With that, I will ask if there is a motion for this project.
I saw a move in the 1523 Payne Street, ZBA 14ZMJV-0024, that we approve the requested variations for both front and, it was front and side yard setback?
It's rear and side.
Rear and side yard setback, in substantial compliance with the documents presented here today.
Is there a second?
I second it.
It has been moved and seconded by a couple people. Is there any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the requested variations for 1523 Payne Street, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Again, it carries with a five-zero vote, so good luck with your project, and we look forward to your expansion. That concludes the business that we have before us this evening. I will ask if there are any announcements. Seeing none, we will stand adjourned. We are, our next meeting will be May 6th here in Council Chambers, and we stand adjourned until that time.